All right, we call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the December 20, 2021 regularly scheduled school board meeting, the final meeting of the hopefully, right? Calendar year 2021. Let me introduce the folks here at the board table. All the way to the end is Zach Wall. And then to the left is Karina Hernandez, Sarah Faltis, and Leah Stanley. We have two student board members here this evening, Phoebe Hermanson and Haley Reed. And joining me at the center table is Paulette Newbold, our board secretary, Dr. Theran Shudey, our superintendent of schools, and I am Sean Heitman. Couple of housekeeping items before we go too much farther. We do have a pink signup sheet there for anybody who wants to make a public comment. Just a reminder, Iowa law prohibits discussing specific employees of the district or their job performance. You will have five minutes to address the board and per board policy, we are not going to respond to anything that's said during public comment. With that out of the way, would you all please join me in the mission statement of the school district? We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do.
Yes.
I thought we might. I saw Dr. Ryan sneaking up here.
Under personnel items, I've added three things. One being the resignation of our records secretary at the high school, Yanelli. And then on the final page, you will see two stipends for Mitch Nims and Kevin Caneely. These are for overload pay. They are going to take on in addition to their regular full-time job, an equivalent of one period a day work for the Marshalltown Virtual Academy. So that is the equivalent of one period of their salaries. Mitch Nims had this last semester, so this is a continuation this semester, and Kevin's is new. Thank you.
We also have an addition to 5.04, early graduates. Jackie Wyatt has shared information that Marla Moody, who's a senior, needs to be added to the list of potential early graduates. With that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Faltis Hernandez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Dr. Shudey?
So we have another business partner recognition. Sarah, if you'd come up. Most of you know Sarah Erickson, she's the director of human resources for the Americas. I think that's your most recent. And Sarah has been really instrumental as being a supportive parent, both business partner of ours, but we're wanting to recognize Emerson Fisher Controls this evening. Emerson has, and Fisher Controls have been great partners for the district for a long, long time. They've been instrumental in providing both human capital support in the form of tutoring on hand pre-COVID, volunteering for junior achievement. We've got a group volunteer force come up there. We've had people come into the workplace like with the Women's Impact Network, I think it's mostly called, and basically helping support STEM efforts. And in our schools, I know that we've had people like them, well, they committed to our industrial arts students at the high school as well. And then from a financial support, they've been instrumental in helping us drive initiatives such as Project Lead the Way, task management, get that off the ground. And then they're also an instrumental partner on our Marshall Business Education Alliance. And I would say we're probably a driving force in helping get that off the ground. Eight, nine, 10 years ago, and it still wins from today. So for all that support over time, we want to thank you for being a true readiness partner. We look forward to it.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, and we're finally getting back into the schools that we actually went last week and had the IJET class, so we'll be more to be.
Mashers? Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn?
I am inviting Alfonso Medina and his wife Vanessa Perez to join me. They are donating with, on behalf of their business, Lock Creta Mexican Girl, and it's No Love, No Tacos nonprofit organization in partnership with Arturo Mujica and ANA Concrete, a $5,000 donation to go towards the negative student lunch account balances. And I just want to say thank you. This is the second donation that the Nutrition Fund has received from you both. And it's just a great way that you can show your support and community and to our families. And it's just an awesome way that you can remove that barrier for any students receiving a nutritious meal while at school. So thank you so much for your keen support and support.
Going to say word?
Sure, yeah.
So this is the second time that we've done this.
Alfonso, can you use the microphone?
So this is the second time that we have been able to do so for our businesses. We did it in 2019. 2020 was a crazy year, but we did very well. But we ended up using all those funds to give out scholarships at MCC through our No Love No Tacos nonprofit that happened all in 2020. And we had a lot of donations from all over the country and the world. So now this year, after we saw a documentary called A Place at the Table, so that reminded me like, hey, we should probably give another donation and start here in our community, kind of in a way to give Marshalltown a rebate for supporting our businesses, Lock Creta, and once again, No Love No Tacos nonprofit. And also, we jump started in partnership with Arturo Mujica, also an alumni of MHS, a concrete, a small concrete company. So every business that we are involved in, we make sure that we're putting money back into the community that that help us become who we are and find creative ways like we did right now to cut, you know, the outstanding lunch of the whole district. So we're very happy to be able to do so and or to find other ways to help the community that we reside in, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah. Okay, so turning to the consent agenda. Any changes or corrections to the minutes of the December 6 meeting? Items of note in personnel, Dr. Ryan?
All right, I have 209 years of service to recognize here. So I'm going to just briefly read these. Mary Bates is retiring after 13 years of service with the Food Service Department. Mary is one of the hardest working, most dedicated employees on our staff. In her 13 years with us, I can likely count on one hand the number of times Mary has missed work. We wish Mary the best in her retirement and hope she will finally slow down enough to enjoy some well-deserved R and R. Leah Cron is a lifetime learner. She exemplifies what it means to advocate for student needs. Leah sets the bar high for professionalism and has changed the lives of many students. The kids and families she has worked with see her as a champion for them. Mrs. Cron, thank you for your passion and learning and service at the families of MCSD. Congratulations, Leah, from your Franklin family. And she worked for us for a total of 29 years. Anne Frost has been one of the most selfless, hardworking, and reliable teammates at Lenahan for many years. She is a, she is great with students. Her colleagues all love working with her, and Lenahan is a better place because of her. She would spend all year working with our students who needed the most and then spend her summer making the high school look immaculate when students return. We wish her the best in her well-deserved retirement, and she was a pair with us for 12 years. Glenda Hughes served Lenahan as a special education teacher the past eight years. She's been committed to fighting salute or finding solutions for students who struggle both academically and socially, and has had huge successes in some of the most challenging situations. She's been a passionate advocate for inclusive practices and has done a great job of implementing behavioral response strategies that allow for her students to access all the learning that they need. Her flexibility and willingness to adapt to adapt her practice in order to support students will be missed. We wish her the absolute best in her next chapter. Dr. Michael Jurgensen, or Mick as we know him, has served as an Iowa educator since 1984 in the Marshalltown Committee School District as the Rogers Elementary Principal for the past 26 years. His knowledge of the history of the district and his deep passion for students, parents, and staff at Rogers, as well as the Marshalltown community, has been greatly appreciated. Dr. Jurgensen was instrumental in collaborating with Micah and Martha Ellen Ty Foundation, which led to the development of Rogers University's summer learning program that served as an effective pilot for what is now implemented district-wide as Bobcat University. Dr. Jurgensen was also founding member of the Read by Third Initiative, which Micah and other community service providers partnered in. One is, one of his many accomplishments was partnering with the Hughes Groove Association to raise funds to expand Rogers' footprint throughout the block that allowed for playground reconstruction and the recent construction of a community access walking track at the school. Dr. Jurgensen is to be commended for his longstanding dedication and service to the Marshalltown Community School District. Judy Neiman has served our students with kindness, empathy, and compassion while being focused on student outcomes. Judy has successfully served some of our more challenging students during her career. She has enhanced our district programming by mentoring special education colleagues and sharing her expertise. She has positively impacted the quality of life for many students, and for that, we are proud to have her represent Franklin in the district. Thank you, Judy, and congratulations from your Franklin family, family. And she worked for us for 26 years. Elizabeth Overstate, a few sentences cannot do justice to the impact Mrs. Overstate has had on our, has had on students, families, and staff. Her approach to coaching, she's an instructional coach, as well as teaching and learning, has shaped the careers of many staff and changed the lives of many students. Her professionalism is unmatched, and her influence is immeasurable. Elizabeth is a leader, a colleague, a mentor, a lifelong learner, confidant, and friend. Thank you, Elizabeth, for all you have done for education in MCSD, and congratulations from your Franklin family. Karen Weaver has been a wonderful support person for MHS students with disabilities. She is always positive and has a smile, which keeps the student spirits up. Karen also served on the MHS Culture Committee, collaborating with others to improve spirits for staff. Karen will be missed by students and staff. She was a pair for us, and she's been here 13 years. Carol White was actually removed from the consent agenda. Thankfully, she has agreed to continue working for us, just fewer hours, so she is not on the actual agenda. Michelle Irwin will always be remembered for the dedication and endless effort she has provided to our students and families. Her desire to see all her students succeed made it possible for her to push forward and teach them the skills needed to meet the expectations. For the past 29 years that she has worked with the district, she has always put her students first and did what she needed to do with the work to get the work done. Our Woodbury family will miss her fast-paced, upbeat personality. And finally, we have Sue Cahill. Sue has always placed Marshalltown students at the top of her priority list. Her motto of love and trust has helped so many of her colleagues get through all the changes we've dealt with in education over the course of the 23 years she's worked for MCSD. Our Woodbury family will miss her outgoing personality, student, family, and community-oriented mindset and servant leadership. So thank you to all of these folks. Like I said, represent over 200 years with the district. Thanks.
Thank you. In interagency agreements and contracts, there's an agreement with Kajit Services for Smart Bus Wi-Fi units in the amount of $5,797.88. Those that we purchased are reimbursed through the Emergency Connectivity Fund. There's a publicity consent and liability release to receive $200 in the form of non-perishable food items for Franklin Elementary School on behalf of the U.S. Cellular Locally Grown Joy Program, and agreement with Tanager Place to provide mental health and other support services for MCSD students, and a final change order for the Marshalltown High School Air Conditioning Project and Anson Elementary Project to decrease the amount of the contract sum in the amount of $55,859.99. And then there are five interagency special education student agreements. Questions about any of those items? Paulette, is there anything to note in bills?
No, sir.
In gifts and grants, we've got the donation from Alfonso Medina and Vanessa Perez in the amount of $5,000 towards negative lunch account balances. And I skipped the open enrollments. There are two, one for this year and one for next year. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Stanley Hernandez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion carries six to zero. Zach, would you grab that pink sheet? Jane? Just introduce yourself. Give us your connection to the school district.
I will do that.
Okay, thanks.
All right. But first, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight and for your personal service to this. My name is Jane Yek. My husband and I have lived in and also served this community for over 40 years. Our four children graduated from this school, and I've worked for about 15 years as either a classroom teacher or a substitute teacher in various district buildings. A few years ago, we moved to a home where we are now centrally located between three large school districts, but we still work in and consider Marshalltown our home. In September, I was asked to fill a five-week substitute position in family and consumer science at the high school. When the need arose, I agreed to teach an additional two and a half weeks. Generally, I worked an average of nine to 10 hours a day, personally purchased needed supplies, made trips to stores for supplies and sewing machines, learned the names of over 120 students, and acquired the necessary technical skills to keep all the class assignments, attendance, and grades current. I tried my best not to interrupt the permanent teacher's maternity leave unless it was necessary. But in return, with no warning, verbal or written, the high school principal called me to a brief meeting before my last scheduled day. With very little explanation, she basically told me that I had offended a student. She'd done an investigation and then said, you're done. Turn in your keys and Chromebook. After spending two more hours trying to make sure everything was in order for the students and the return of the permanent teacher on Monday, I went home totally perplexed about what had just happened. Whatever investigation took place, I was never consulted as to my side of the story. The next day was Friday. Seven other teachers had to give up their time to cover the responsibilities I would have fulfilled. In addition, with no warning or communication of any kind from the district office, I discovered I was blocked from all of my future bookings with the district. I emailed the Director of Human Resources requesting clarification regarding my district status and the reasons for my abrupt dismissal. She emailed back that the high school principal had done an investigation, and they had decided that I was no longer a good fit for the district. When I pressed for an explanation with a second email, I was finally provided for complaints that were made against me. But again, I was given no opportunity to respond to any of them. On December 6, I emailed the superintendent to request an appointment. I have not received a response from him. If requested, I would be happy to schedule a time to discuss my side of any issue or provide written documents. The job at the high school is very challenging, but I enjoyed having the extended time to actually build working relationships with the students in my regular classes. I believe I accomplished that goal with a majority of them. Having said that, I don't deny that there were certainly students that didn't like me. I was unwilling to tolerate their lack of respect, rudeness, and addiction to their cell phones. That was particularly true of students in a study hall I supervised. It had a class roster that changed daily and was made up of primarily freshmen. I believe, and I'm sure you do as well, that education is about more than just delivering information. It includes teaching students to be disciplined and productive. There are many students that are actually glad to see me in our classroom and tell me so. There are teachers who are grateful when it's me filling in for them because they know I will maintain order in their classrooms and make sure student learning is a priority. And as you well know, there are many teachers who are discouraged and worn out from having to give up yet another planning period or do double coverage to fill frequent vacancies in their building. So why have I been blocked from teaching in the Marshalltown School District and in such a strange manner? As a licensed substitute teacher, I am under the umbrella of the 400 series of school board policy and question why that policy was not implemented in my situation. There is a highlighted copy of, or here I have highlighted copies that I will hand out for each of you to have on that. As I mentioned in the beginning, I still consider Marshalltown home and care deeply about the welfare of its students and teachers. For that reason, at least for now, I still do desire to teach and select classes in the district where my services are valued. I'm here to ask you to reverse the district action that was taken against me. Thank you for your time. And here are, I will give. Thank you.
Thank you. Paulette, did we have anybody who sent anything in that one of us read in? Okay. In that case, Mr. Manas, Mr. Bezlinga, you're up.
Sure. Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, whatever it is. Mr. Gosling and I, Mr. Manas, we'd like to kind of give you a brief overview of the Marshalltown Virtual Academy. This year, we are divided into a K6 building and a 712 building. So we're going to kind of keep this part short and sweet because with new board members, we thought you may have some questions. So we'll get started with some of our demographics and what our makeup is right now. Then we'll go from there.
Okay, next slide, please. So Marshalltown Virtual Academy was in the planning stages last about a year from a year ago now, and we launched with students this fall when school started. So you can see the breakdown of the secondary students there and the grade level distribution. We have about 93 to 95 students in MBA in grade seven through 12. Two seniors are not listed on that list, but they were on that early graduate list that you will hear about a little later in the, in the meeting.
With the K6 side, we are sitting at, right now, currently 56 students ranging from four in first grade up to 12 in fifth grade.
So as far as enrollment trends for MBA, it's probably important to know that we are getting more requests to move to MBA at the secondary level than we are to move back to MBA. The MBA delivery model at the secondary level is we employ an asynchronous delivery model, grade seven through 12. So students are able to log in and access their instruction at any given time, basically on demand. They have highly qualified teachers that they are able to access, and those teachers maintain office hours so they can provide remediation, extension, support, or other support. If students have a technical question or some sort of problem navigating the system, they're able to contact either myself or my secretary, and we, we assist them with that. I would say our data shows that our system is quite reliable. We use a third-party vendor called Admetum, and we are up over 99.5% of the time, so.
With the K6 school, it's a little bit different as far as the synchronous and the asynchronous. I'll get to that on the next slide. But right now, students coming back in person are 14. The majority of those are students that we've requested to come back to school because as, remember back when we first started talking to this, we had an attendance policy laid out, and, and that was making sure that you were attending with your teacher in person and getting your asynchronous assignments in within a week's time. So we've worked with these families to get in some, and for some kids, they're just not successful in this model, and they really need to be back in school. And honestly, I've had very little pushback on bringing their students back because they've realized that if we're bringing them back, we've really done our due diligence, the teachers have, and myself, on making sure that they're in a position to be the most successful for them. We meet as a team about every three weeks. So myself, the instructional coach, Jen Nelson, will meet with Ms. Alt House, who does the kindergarten and the LL students. We'll meet with Ms. Fricki, who does the four through six students, and Ms. Clubdance, who does the one through three students with input from Paula Johnson, who is the special ed teacher K-12 for all the schools. So we talk about our students of concern right there, whether we're, you know, whether it's they're not doing their assignments, whether they're struggling. And sometimes, like Eric said, we have some technical problems, whether we, you know, we'll work with the families to make sure that they've got the internet access that they need. If there's a problem with the Chromebooks, I work with the tech department. We get them a replacement and get theirs repaired. So a little bit different. If you'll go to the next slide, I kind of give you, and yeah, one more, kind of a day in the life of what it looks like for a student. It's kind of hard to see. Sorry about that. So every day, they're going to meet synchronously with their teachers. So for kindergarten, it's in the afternoon. They may meet at 1:00 with their teacher. First grade's 8:30, et cetera. They do different things. So what they do is when they meet, they meet for a time, and those times are not right. I apologize. It's actually a 55-minute block that they have a morning meeting, which kind of goes along with our, I just blanked out, our responsive classroom philosophy. So that, the morning meeting comes from that. Every, every teacher does that with their block of kids. Then they do some literacy support and math support. So this is not teaching the lessons. The lessons are in a bank in Google Classroom, so every subject is contained, science, math, literacy, all the specials, and they're all done. There's a group of teachers that are be, that are reimbursed for their time, but they, they build those lessons, not necessarily the, it's not actually the MBA teachers. It's other teachers throughout the district who have built the first grade math, the second grade science, et cetera. So the kids have those blocks of lessons that they're, we generally give a week. So for that week's time, and again, it's, it's a virtual academy, so we're not saying you've got to do this Monday, you've got to do this Tuesday. They have that flexibility that the seven through 12 have. So we've kind of check on Sunday nights to make sure that the lessons are being kept up with. For our kids that are English language learners and for our special education students, they have a block of time also because obviously that, you know, we're legally bound to offer those services to those kids. So they have a set time each grade level that they have to meet with their teachers to gain that language support or that support to overcome a disability, a challenge they may have. And then in the afternoon, if kids are really having a struggle, the teacher can meet with them again. So their regular teacher has a 25-minute block in the afternoon, and some kids need, you know, some kids don't need that extra time, but some do. So she'll work with the students and the parents. A lot of times, especially with the younger kids, the parents are online with them. So we can say, hey, you know, fifth grader, we're going to meet at 1:55 this afternoon. We're going to go over some concepts and math you may not be getting right now. So little bit different for us as, as far as the synchronous and the asynchronous learning. We don't have a third party, but a lot of our district teachers are putting the time to create those lessons. So. Well, with that, we're at the question part. But again, we want to keep it short and see what questions you may have about the virtual academy from either Eric or myself.
So a schedule, keep putting it in. Technically, they just, if they don't have a ELR or special ed, they just meet from the 9:30 to 10:25 with the teacher?
For that one and the afternoon.
And just on the app. So they all meet. It doesn't
And just on the app, so they all meet, it doesn't matter.
Not necessarily the afternoon part. The afternoon is for those kids that really need a lot more, may need some more interventions. And it could be kids that are already receiving ELL support and special education support. So just like with our kids that are in person, we, we try to offer as many opportunities to get any kind of interventions they may need. It may just be a simple question. It could be, like Eric said, dealing with technical questions. It could be, hey, the sound's cutting out on my Chromebook, what can we do to help this? But it may be a math, again, there's math, science and social studies and literacy that we're doing. So the other two subjects really aren't covered here and it may be that. It may be that the lesson isn't working correctly for them in their Google Classroom. We've had some parents that actually joined us in that afternoon time, even though we did a live, when we started kind of orientation for parents, there's a certain way that they upload their lessons. A lot of them, they take pictures of their completed lessons and they upload it into their Google Classroom. So some parents need a little bit more help with that part. So that afternoon's very flexible. But yeah, it's, it's forty-five, it could be as little as forty-five minutes and it could technically be as much as two hours, two and a half hours if they have ELL special education and they come back for the other intervention time.
Do you have a specific teacher that does, how many teachers do you have to serve most of the grades?
Well, that's, Ms. Freaky serves four through six.
Okay.
Ms. Clubdance serves one through three. Ms. Alt House serves kindergarten. We have one special ed teacher, Ms. Johnson, who serves K twelve. And then we have Ms. Alt House, and I think Ms. Sinks actually both serve the ELL students we have.
Then do you still have XLP type support for those students?
Yes, we do. Thanks for bringing, yeah, Ms. Holman's actually been doing that for the K six kids.
Do they have the option to participate in some of the music and fine arts?
Yes.
Programs? How does that work?
They, we've, we've actually got a young man who is doing band at Lenah, and I just sent, when we talked to the parents, we simply have them get in touch with Mr. Young, the principal there, and he sets it up. So just like any, some of our kids who may be homeschooled or some kids that are just completely virtual, they have that option of participating in those extracurricular activities.
This is.
Go ahead, Jen.
This is more of a comment than a question, but I've been doing my building visits, as you know, and have spoken to some of the virtual teachers. And had, they feel very good about what's happening at the elementary with writing the lessons specific to our general education curriculum. I think that's going well.
I think it is, you know, we, we had, again, some technical issues, just like any brand new program, there are a couple of hiccups, but the teachers work together with myself and Jen and, and you know, everything runs pretty smoothly. It's, sometimes you hit deadlines about getting those lessons ready so that the parents, you know, some parents are go-getters with their kids and I mean, they'll, they'll jump on on Monday and by Tuesday, they've got the week's lessons completed. And some may take a little bit more time, you know, a lot, like I said, a lot of our kids have parents that are with them during the lesson time and some are working. And so a lot of our kids have, you know, some grandparents that support them, older sisters or brothers that support them. And we've had to work with some of them on some of the more technical issues for some of our less tech savvy helpers.
And when the parents enter into this virtual or when the students do, do they sign a contract? Or how do they know what the expectation is for the virtual classroom?
They've got a handbook that we gave them at the beginning of the year. We did an orientation a couple of times, myself and Ms. Fenders at the beginning to really talk about what the student expectations were and the parent expectations. Because, you know, for this, for kids to be successful, especially kinder in first and second, these are younger kids who really are just building their foundations for learning, we've got to have parental support to make them successful. So the parents, we make them aware that way. If we had some that came in after school started, I spoke with them, I sent them the documents that said, here, you know, this is, this is what we expect. Please let me know if you have any comments or questions about those. So we try to make sure that the parents have that, whether it's in person, on phone, we use the remind app to send those documents out also.
And of the students returning to, that were asked to, to come back, were most of those your early elementary?
It was a mix.
It was a mix.
No, actually, the early elementary seem to be doing a pretty decent job about getting their assignments in. And obviously, especially kindergarten, it's, it's a different, you know, this is new for all of us trying to teach five-year-olds for the first time and we're teaching them in a, you know, virtual and sometimes asynchronous environment. So, but you know, Jess does a great job of working with those kids. It's been more of some of our older kids who the parents may leave at home or they may not have that support at home. And the parents have understood. I mean, we, we've honestly had very little pushback about bringing those kids back because it's what's best for them.
Do you think long-term that the younger, that will off this program, the younger kids, or is it be morally based on high school kids?
That's a great question. You know, right now, we're still looking at our data. We've only got one set of data from our fall screeners and everything. So we're kind of looking to see how successful we are with that piece. I think, I think, you know, traditionally and I think it's more of a secondary, you see more secondary virtual settings than you do elementary settings. But I, you know, I, I think our data is still up in the air. We're still checking it all to make sure our kids are going to be successful in that piece. I've always thought of it as more of a secondary piece at seven through twelve. But we've certainly went a long way toward making that K six piece pretty successful the first time we've done it.
I, I'd like to hear more at some point from, from the parent or the child about the experience.
Oh, sure.
And is this being used for credit recovery at the secondary level?
So the EdMenum program is used at MLA and it's used at MBA. So at MLA, EdMenum is used for both original credit and credit recovery.
Okay, so, so it could be used for that.
It could be, it can be customized. The courses can be customized to, to do that.
Okay.
So what do you attribute the, like, why are more, why do you think more secondary education students are wanting to move towards this program?
I, I think there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons out there. I think some people now have had a chance to have some experience with some hybrid, some experience back in person, and I think they're choosing what they think works best for their family. I would say certainly at the secondary level, student interest in this kind of learning is, is, goes beyond the pandemic. There, there is a lot of interest in doing this. I was helping a young man the other day on a, I'm covering a careers exploration class at the middle school because like everybody, we're a little short, you know. And so I'm talking to this young man on email and I'm like, hey, can you, you know, can you come in and show me your Chromebook? Cause I can't figure out what's going on. He goes, I'm in Louisiana with my family. So it's, people are still, are, are taking advantage of that, that flexibility and, and and doing things. And we see logins at all times of the day. We see every weekend day, I have kids completing modules and units in the, in the system. It's not related to Monday through Friday. It does swoon. People do follow the traditional weeks, but it's starting to, it's starting to flatten out more the curve. And we see more work on weekends and non-traditional times, so.
What's your, is there a capacity for the number of kids you guys can have in the MBA currently?
So, we, we started the year, we were just, we were, we were short-staffed. And our capacity is limited by probably the number of people that we can assign to this work. We have a contract with EdMenum that allows us, I believe, three or four hundred licenses. So we do have, there are some limits out there. We're not near that yet, but it's, it's been good and flexible for the kids that are, that are doing it. We have some real rock stars. I have a young man in eighth grade that's finished all of his algebra one and has started on his geometry. And he's in eighth grade and he's just accelerating in that particular course. Now I need to nudge him to get his language arts done. So the conversations in the virtual world are really about pacing and engagement. And a lot of my parent communication is, hey, I haven't seen Billy login in three days, or Suzie hasn't logged in in three days. And consistency is really important and staying with it and, you know, not getting behind, because that requires a big push.
How often are you seeing if there is needed a consistency or, or if they're needing to come back?
So I've had a couple of conversations with folks about coming back and I really started that almost at the end of September, first of October, and that seemed to prompt more engagement. For, for lack of a better reason, it's like, oh, I want to stay online. I don't want to, I don't want to give up this opportunity. So they're, they're allowing them to do that.
So if a parent wanted to apply for this, they have to do it at the beginning of the school year, or can they do it in the middle or?
We have people asking now, and I have a couple of families going back, as you saw in the data, but we have a few more people. And some of those are kind of probably special circumstance related. We have some young ladies in the district who may be expecting and are going to need probably the flexibility of an online program during this, this period of time. So we're allowing them to maintain their education during that personal circumstance, which is a really important thing too. Do we have many, many kids from out of a school district that open enroll to this program? We do, I believe. And so we had a couple.
Previous, previous to this, and we, we'd have a couple handful each year that would apply to go to the, one of the two state-approved schools before they opened it up for other districts. Been a couple in the elementary school that have opened enrolled in.
So we've had some of the secondary too. I think the bigger impact is people who were open and rolled out that are choosing not to open and roll out anymore. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
So I don't know that we're, you know, bringing in a lot of folks from the outer reaches of the state. But I think folks who were here who might have been going to one of the neighboring school districts are just electing to use this option, so.
Well, the, the timing for which we received state approval to offer, it only gave about two weeks before the open enrollment deadline. So I'd say there'd be a greater chance of potential open enrollment in for this purpose, depending on the success of the program for next year than there would have been for this year. Are there questions?
Um, now, your virtual teachers, some of them are teaching from rooms in the school building and some of them are teaching from home, some of the newer ones. Is there a rationale for why they would need to be in a school building to run this program?
I think, you know, the only thing I, obviously, we still look at them as teachers, just like the regular in-person teachers are. So we're trying to keep that day, that routine as common and as normal as possible. So like, for instance, the K six all are in their own separate areas. They'll have their rooms. They have a daily schedule, just like the in-person teachers would. They have duties that they do either before or after school, you know. Being in school allows them to be able to meet with me or the instructional coach pretty quickly if they need to, you know, like, you know, if you've got, if there's a disruption online, they need us to, to deal with that. If there's a, again, a technical problem or if there's something with one of the lessons that they have a question about. So, you know, the immediacy of, of being in the building allows us the convenience of being able to work on problems as they may happen or any kind of issues that come up. So that's, you know, that's what has worked well for us in the elementary school.
At the secondary level, almost all of my folks are part-time, this is a part, a piece of their assignment. It's not their whole assignment. So they're teaching at the high school or they're teaching at MLA. So it, it wouldn't work for them to be.
At home because they're already at school, right? Okay. So do you see a potential as this expands for teachers to be working more from home? Do you see this changing? I, I just am thinking of how things are changing in the work world around us.
I think we're, we're not even through our first semester and I don't know, we, we haven't had that conversation yet. It's, we're just too early to really trying to get through the year. Haven't had those upper level kinds of, kinds of conversations yet.
That's got summer written all over it right there, so.
It does.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
One of you gets to leave.
All right. Good evening. I told Eric I get to sit here and smile while he presents, so no. Exciting to be here with you tonight. We have some at-risk work to take a look at with you. And at the end of our presentation, we'll be seeking approval. So let's go ahead and get started and we are always open to questions that you may have as well. So I don't know if you remember when I sat here with you and we talked about the early warning system, but we really thought through what does it take to be an at-risk, to at-risk student? And we talked about approximately seventeen hundred of our students are considered in that at-risk criteria. Or you can see at the bottom of this slide, forty percent. There's just some pieces there that really tell us that we have at-risk students that are here, a part of our Marshalltown Community School District.
Yeah, so I do the McKinney-Vento identification for the district too, and you may be surprised to, to learn there are about a hundred homeless students in the Marshalltown Community School District. So we do have a lot of, we do have a lot of young folks who are in some very difficult circumstances. So the at-risk work is really about trying to remove the barriers for these kids and help them to achieve.
This next slide really illustrates that we are under Iowa code for our comprehensive school improvement plan. When we look at our at-risk funding and really think about the services that we provide for our students. I know you are all aware of that, but it was just kind of something we felt would be important to remind you as we talk through the different services that we provide within our at-risk programming. Okay, this is the big slide. How do we use all of the funding that we receive for at-risk? And you can see that we have just over thirty positions throughout the district that are funded through our at-risk programming. The first bullet there, I believe, for those of you who have been on the board for quite some time, you probably recognize school support or school resource specialists, our SRS specialists, I think that was an emphasis to try to get one in every single building. And that's been a priority here within the last year, Eric. Correct me, was it the last year or two years?
Yeah, we've added to all of the elementaries. The elementaries used to share those positions and now each of the elementaries has their own.
We have our alternative programs, MLA and PIER, and we know that Eric is our fearless leader of MLA. Glad to have him here tonight, helping me. Our juvenile court liaisons, they play a critical role in both our middle school and our high school. I even, as the director of instruction, run into them several times when I'm in the building. So they are just absolutely incredible people who create a filter of support for our students that are necessary. And then we have some math and literacy interventionists up in our buildings as well, which we know from the academic lens are critically important. Especially when we look at intensive intervention for students that are targeting essential standards. Beyond the FTE, we have outside contracts with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, mental health agencies that are local, IJAG, MICA. And I think we've got someone here that can also explain more about MICA if we needed her to, but that's just an incredible partnership that we have. And then Net High, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with Net High. If you have questions, he's the guy for that. He can probably answer them better than I can.
Yeah, so Net High is a third-party who provides some high school curriculum to gravely at-risk students who may not be a fit for attending school on campus. At a given time, we will use the Net High provider to help us serve some of those students.
And we also have resources such as EdMenum. I know that that's been mentioned several times, but that's really that program that allows the asynchronous learning to occur as well as, I know MLA really relies on that program as well. So you might think, well, how does that, how do all of these programs, you know, really impact our students? We look at our graduation rate as an. We look at our graduation rate as an indicator. Looks pretty darn good. As you see, those percentages just keep kind of ticking upward, although we know that we kind of hit the pandemic in two thousand twenty. So we're we're kind of curious to see what that graduation will look like. The rate will look like in two thousand twenty-one. Our dropout totals, we actually did have access to the the two thousand twenty-one data there, and you can see that it went the other direction, and I I would anticipate that the graduation rate probably mimics that as well. But really, when you look at how comparable we are to the state of Iowa, we're doing really well as a community school district that services forty percent of at-risk student population. And then our attendance. Oh, yep, there we go. So we always strive for ninety-five percent of our student body to be in our seats every single day, and you can see that pre-K through six, that average is at ninety-three point three percent. Again, amid a pandemic, which is pretty incredible. And then when you look at our seven through twelve attendance, we're at eighty-six point one percent. An indicator that we will be, and we have been with our attendance committee, continuing to focus on.
If if a student's out for quarantine, are they counted as absent?
I believe.
Okay, if they're quarantined, as long as we can provide them access to their education, they wouldn't be.
So if you if you provide the access to online education, but they don't log on, then do you count them as absent?
They would be absent, then if they don't engage.
That's typically the way it goes. Situation.
I think those attendance numbers for last year, though, I think those were specific to our in-person students, not our online learning students, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So if you scroll back, Amy, those are year-to-date. That's a right now.
Oh, for this year.
Year-to-date, average attendance. Yep.
Oh, for this school year?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's pretty good.
We've had some things that have happened outside of our control as well, have impacted our attendance. Okay, so really thinking forward to next year, we'd like to continue our programming and continue to support those SRS positions that we've put in place at the elementaries, and we have no other recommended changes with the at-risk budget.
I have been just finished visiting the elementary, basically all the buildings, and this SRS position is something that's come up over and again about how valuable they are working with the families and the at-risk students. It's been very much appreciated.
Awesome. So what does that role do? Just, I'm not very familiar with them, so if you can explain that to me.
Sure. So I think each building, it varies a little bit. I can certainly speak specifically to Marshalltown Learning Academy. We're supporting access to mental health services, making referrals to community agencies, linking kids up with MICA, with YSS, with Independent Living Center Associates, the Strengthening Center. Kind of responding to the here and now, the the mental health issues that will come up in the building day to day, working with kids and families who are not attending regularly and coaching them and encouraging them and trying to remove barriers for them to get into school. Our SRS also helps facilitate some of the small groups that happen in our building to support social emotional learning.
We we used to refer to them as social workers, but they, most of them didn't have a social work degree. So we changed the name, but their function is very much like a social worker. And so they kind of do a lot of different things, but one of the things we talked about in terms of when we recommended the expansion of their so that we had one full-time FTE at each elementary was that when our community schools grant with MICA goes away, they will take on a lot more of the attendance responsibilities that those positions are handling at three of the elementaries. And then we've also been trying to use S R funds to hire three dish or actually more, a handful more tenants specialist bilingual attendance specialist as well for the duration of time we have S R available. Knowing that when those positions go away, at least at the elementary, the SRSs will handle that. And then we'll just have to work through what that looks like at the secondary buildings that are larger and you know, still with one or two SRSs there.
Is there also a counselor? Is this part of the role or is that separate?
They are separate, although I would say they work hand in hand. You know, your counselor is going to understand the needs of the family and maybe more in-depth, some of the more in-depth confidential information. But that SRS can be a vehicle that goes out to the family's home and visits and asks, you know, what needs do you have? How can I help you get child A to school to and from that sort of thing?
Couple of statements I want to say on the attendance on the elementary. I feel as a school district, as a parent, I'm talking is is I love how you incentivize, recognize the kids with certificates. And another thing that recently hit home to my kindergartner was the teacher sent out a postcard. She'd been struggling with testing this last year. And kindergarten, getting mail, how exciting. Why not? Why? I want to go back to school the next day. So we're engaging and connecting with these kids. I I love it.
And that I would say that's true in many of the buildings that I'm in. I see these attendance certificates and sometimes they're in the hallway, sometimes they're in the classroom, sometimes they go home. It really can be different on every building, but and I think even at Miller, Jan, I'm pointing at you because you've probably seen it. But they'll have Miller Student of the Day and they'll have it in their showcase as well. So they all kind of have their own primary reason. I'm guessing the high school does something. Girls, put me on the spot. They don't know.
But I just love how they're connecting the teachers, the staff, you know, like that postcard. Those kids, they love that, you know, and it wants to go back to school and it's great. It's great.
It's important. We need them here.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We need a motion, like, do we need an approval on that?
I think it's coming back and it's in the finance, right? Is that what that is, Paulette?
Never mind. Thank you.
Okay, um, good evening. I'm Phoebe Hermanson, and to my right is Haley Reed. Aaron and Taylor couldn't make it tonight because they're at the swim meet in Grinnell. Aaron's obviously swimming and then Taylor manages.
All right, so our upcoming sports, like we said, the boys' swimming versus Newton tonight is in Grinnell, and then the boys' basketball play Southeast Polk at home. That's on the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then the girls play Waki at Waki.
Um, so recently, we've had a few signees. So Gannon Williams is going to play football at North Dakota State. Just kind of exciting. Amber signed a little bit ago, but she's going to be playing golf at Drake. And then Autumn Finch is going to be playing volleyball at Simpson.
This was an exciting event that happened just at this last basketball game. Armani Thomas, he's a senior this year, hit his a thousand-point mark in this last game. So that was exciting for him and all the seniors went crazy in the student section when it happened. So that was really cool.
Um, so we had our holiday spirit week dress-up days last week. So Monday, everyone got to wear their pajamas. Tuesday, you could wear whatever fun socks you had. So I whipped out my Santa socks. So that was pretty fun. Winter Wonderland Day was a whiteout. Then we had you either dress in all red or all green, and that was supposed to be Santa versus Elvis Day. And then Friday, we had ugly sweater day, which is my favorite day. So then in the pictures, so on the left, we have a junior and he had his nice Santa sweater, and then on the right is Aaron, and I thought his sweater was a little controversial for a Christmas sweater. But he was convinced it was a Christmas sweater with the colors, but and also Coach Man also agreed that it's Christmas sweater. But I don't know if it qualifies.
Then lastly, we have four days till Christmas.
Thanks for the reminder.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to do this, Dan?
Yeah, for the grid. On behalf of Mrs. Wyatt, I would like to present to you eight high school seniors and three high school juniors who are on track for early graduation. The seniors would be on track for graduation here at the end of semester, assuming successful completion of all their graduation requirements. The juniors would be on track for graduation at the end of their junior year.
Any questions? Now, is there a motion to approve the early graduates subject to successful completion of all requirements?
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis, Falters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion carries six to zero.
All right, before you, we have the the Teamsters Union representing the paras and the district have come to an agreement that's before you here, bulleted. We would like to, effective January first of two thousand twenty-two, so in a couple of weeks, we would like to move all paras into one P lane, so move them all to lane three. Uh, this can be a ten to eighteen percent increase for almost a hundred of our hundred and twenty-ish paras. And then those who are currently on lane three therefore wouldn't receive an increase in January. They would be eligible to move up a step in the fall. Those who are just moved from lane two to lane three would stay at their current step in the fall. And then in addition, we'd like to offer an additional incentive of thirty cents per hour starting in the fall for any para who has a bachelor's degree or a para certification from the BOE. And if this is agreed to, we would sign a new contract and there would be no negotiations in the spring for the upcoming school year. And as Paulette, thank you, added there, the estimated annual cost of this proposal, which is something that we normally give during negotiations, that cost it's approximately ten percent or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this. And so we are coming before you jointly asking for approval for that new contract.
Questions? Then may I have a motion to approve the proposal with Para Educator Union for increasing wages as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Wal, McGinnis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Kretzinger. Swallow your food and get up to the table.
Good evening. So we're here to ask for approval to seek authority from the School Budget Review Committee for the cost, administrative costs of the River Hills program. So if you're not familiar with River Hills, it's one of the few specialty schools in the state of Iowa. Our local AEA runs it. It's up in the River Hills area, and it really works with kids with the most significant cognitive disabilities you can find in the state. So one of the reasons that we work with a school like this is if we feel like our resources aren't available to meet the kids' needs, luckily, in this situation, there's a specialty school to be part of. In order to have access to it, you have to be part of a consortium. And within that consortium, then every school district shares part of that cost. So in this case, there's an administrator there as a principal, and they're asking for us to share the cost of that principal's salary and benefits. Our cost here is the amount of one thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. And so I'm asking for your approval so we can continue to be part of that consortium. What questions do you have?
So we're currently with them currently, right?
We are currently with them. We currently have students being served by them.
How many students roughly?
Two.
Two, okay.
Is this a service we use on a, like annually, we've always got a few kids that?
We usually at least have one student there.
Okay.
What do they specialize in?
Students with really severe cognitive delays like far-spectrum autism, far-spectrum Down syndrome, significant genetic disorders. Students who really struggle with both physical mobility as well as communication and have really large augmented devices. And also with all these com behaviors. So many times you'll run into students who struggle to communicate, and so you see behaviors associated with that, and so they work with that as well.
Can we provide transportation to them?
We do. Yep.
So that is that additional cost then?
That's not part of this.
Okay. Now, when we pay our annual fee to the AEA, does some of that money go to River Hills?
I'll say my understanding, but Paulette's going to jump in here. So the flow-through money, I believe, is what you're speaking about. Flow-through money is not a district fund. It's a percentage of money going to the AEA's coming from the Department of Education that's allocated based on our student population, I would say. But my understanding, and Paulette, tell me if I'm wrong here. If the AA systems would shut down, that money wouldn't come directly to us necessarily. It would have to be decided whether some of it comes to us and some goes to the Department of Education based on some of the general supervision authority that they put into the AEA's hands. Paulette, you want to add to that?
AEA's don't have any ability to levy property taxes, so we do it on their behalf. So it's really just a flow-through.
Right. That doesn't quite answer my question, but okay. Well, that flow-through money that's going to, how is River Hills funded? Obviously, this one thousand nine hundred and eighteen that we're paying for our two students is not enough to fund them. So how is River Hills funded?
Oh, we pay a lot more than that than.
We pay a tuition, just like we would for any other student.
This is just pertaining to the administrative costs because administrative costs typically can't be charged to special education.
Oh, okay. That explains why this is separate. That makes more sense.
May I have a motion to approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for special education administrative costs associated with the River Hills Consortium Program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So moved. Second.
Was that you, Leah?
Yeah.
Okay, Stanley Hernandez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
So we've got two calendar options that I wish to put before you for consideration for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Calendar option number one, almost exactly mirrors this year's calendar with the exception of the shifting of the dates accordingly from year to year. Both of these calendars have the exact same starting date for students, Tuesday, August twenty-third, which is the first day school can start by law. They both have the same ending date, Tuesday, June first. They both have the same winter break that extends through January third due to the fact that January first will fall on a on a Sunday, thus making Monday, the second, really feel like New Year's Day. And then I guess the third would be a recovery day. Or be getting back from ball games and whatever people are doing during that time. Yeah, both of these calendars would facilitate Morrison High School graduation occurring on Memorial Weekend as it has more years than not. The difference with the second option is, and this was at the request of some of our people who especially this fall were feeling really, really rundown even prior to Thanksgiving, was, you know, is there any way we can build in a a fall break in addition to some form of break in the spring? A couple of years ago, the calendar committee had agreed on the board as well to kind of A couple of years ago, the Calendar Committee had agreed on the board as well to kind of do an alternate year thing where one year we do spring break, the next year we do an expanded Easter, but not a full spring break. I really feel like this was a course of spring break year after having the expanded Easter last year. I really felt like building in spring break again in some way, shape, or form was gonna be important to do, but by doing a fall break and splitting up what would have otherwise been spring break, it actually, everything works out the same. We have the same number of professional development days. We have the same number of student learning hours. It's just moving things around a little bit. So for example, with Thanksgiving, we always have the three days during this Thanksgiving week, and then you'll recall like this past year, the Monday was a professional development day, so students had that off. We just shifted that professional development day to the Monday of Thanksgiving week, and they added one more vacation day to fill out that, you know, to create that fall break. And then for spring break, we just split up what would normally be the spring break. So our teachers generally have a teacher comp day following parent-teacher conferences in the evening. That typically is one of the five days during spring break, but since we're breaking spring break away, we would still have that teacher comp date be on the Monday following parent-teacher conference week, first week of March. And then similar to what we had before, we'd have a four-day-plus weekend break around Easter. The other nice thing about having an Easter break when we do is that that tends to be one of the two times of years that we have quite a few students go out of the country to visit family for, you know, a week to two weeks, to sometimes a month, and so it's a convenient time for us to have a break, which allows for not as many students to miss school. Ran these by the Calendar Committee last week, which consists of a staff member and or administrator, a teacher or administrator from each of the buildings. The only thing that was suggested for consideration was the idea of, well, why don't we just move that teacher comp day that's scheduled for early March on the fall break schedule to either April fifth or April twelfth to give a full week like we would for spring break. It's just at a different time. And so there was some discussion about that. I think the challenge is there's no longer months for students or staff than the months of January, February, and March. And so if we were to remove that date, you know, we do have parent-teacher conference day on the third. We do have a professional development day, but there's really no break from work during that long cold, dark stretch. So that's why we've kept it where it is, to have a day following parent-teacher conferences, which is what it was designed for. And then also keeping it to the four days around Easter. So what our typical practice is, is after presenting to the board, unless there's any reservations about them, is that we would put them out, survey both our employees, and then survey our parents and get feedback from them. Sometimes what one group thinks is favorable is not the same as the other group. So it's always interesting to see the results of that. But once we collect that data, which would go out immediately tonight or tomorrow at the latest, and we'll do a reminder after we get back from break and probably go that first full week from breakout and then collect that data and take that into consideration prior to making a formal recommendation to the board on January eighteenth.
Is there ever any discussion by the committee to end school before Memorial Day?
Well, there has been, but it's become much more difficult. You can't have all those breaks and finish, you know, before.
So it's a give and take again.
Yeah, it happens on occasion, depending on how calendars roll and stuff, assuming you don't have any or too many snow days. So, but there haven't, there's maybe been one year, if any, that I've been here where we finished around that time. But the hopes are it doesn't extend too much beyond because you can only give seniors five scheduled days off that the rest of the student population doesn't have. So, you know, if your school year gets stretched out too far, then then you may have to have seniors, you know, you may have to have graduation the following week or something like that, and we have that happen, I think. Depending on how the calendar rolls and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I mean, there are districts that that do. I think there's two things that are happening there. One is they're not they're treating the thousand eighty hours, which is a minimum number of hours for students as their maximum. And the other thing is they're not necessarily taking the breaks, like they may do the couple of days around Easter instead of a full spring break and that sort of thing. Or maybe a day less here and there on winter break and that sort of thing, or maybe not having the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. I mean, there's very little latitude, quite honestly, since the state passed the law that said we couldn't start until August twenty-third, because most districts prior to that, not all, but most were starting the week of August tenth, and then most all of them were getting done before Memorial. But I would say to get done before Memorial today, you'd almost have to be operating on the thousand eighty minimum hours as being your maximum, and that's not necessarily in the best interest of kids. And our teachers have to be here for a hundred and ninety-one contract days anyway, so their best value is when they have kids in their classroom versus a lot of days where they're here working and kids aren't here.
I mean, it would be like three days, right, that you'd have to find somewhere, given there'd be no weather days. Yeah.
Well, one thing I appreciate is you're putting in that comp day after conferences, because that has come up in our discuss. The teachers are really exhausted after those conference days, and that extra day is important to them for getting, recouping and moving on. The other one that I would like first to consider, you have, I think it's eight full professional days. One of the issues we're running into with being so short-staffed is that teachers are covering for other teachers, and when they're not covering for other teachers, they're doing PLC meetings in the middle of the school day. Has there been any consideration of doing half-day professional days more often and moving the PLCs to professional days so that teachers are not using their preparation periods to meet with PLCs?
Well, as of about four years ago, we had Wednesday early outs, and that was a time that was used, but it was it was not very convenient for parents. And when we put the idea of going to the fewer Monday, full-day professional developments, which our staff wanted at that time as well, they wanted longer sustained times for their professional learning versus the two hours or so that by the time the kids were gone and staff traveled between buildings and this and that, it was more like an hour to an hour and a half instead of two hours worth of time. And there were some daycare or latch key issues that were created by those Wednesday early outs as well, so.
I'd be thinking more half-days as opposed to a two, an hour and a half off. I mean, so you could really devote some time to it.
Well, there's a certain amount of time. You have to go till one or one-thirty to have it count, you know.
Well, I thought we were doing hours.
Well, we are doing hours, but I don't know that, I don't know that there'd be perceived value in having kids come for a half-day. I mean, it really plays havoc with the schedule, you know. Half the class is me versus the other half, and then they get off, or you shorten everything down to
Thirty minutes.
Twenty-five minutes or less. So, I mean, it typically with teachers, the pendulum swings on this thing after you do it one way for a certain period of time. And I've done it all different ways in my thirty-seven years. So this was the latest thing that our team of people to put together the professional development as well as our staff and parents had wanted. And haven't heard, had a lot of complaints about it. I mean, PLCs are never gonna be exclusive to professional development.
No, but could we at least be thinking about holding, even if we held half of our PLCs on these days, we really need to free up some of these teachers during the school day. They can't get parents called, they can't get lessons, they can't even get papers copied. I mean, there needs to be time in that teacher day where they can do some preparation. So I don't know quite how to balance this, but if we could, I think the PLC process is essential and important. But I also think it needs to not be all of the preparation. I mean, there's preparation beyond what you're doing in that group meeting.
Yeah, I mean, teachers all have personal prep time unless they're having to give up that prep time to cover for another teacher and then are getting paid for that. It's not ideal, but it's the circumstances we're in. It's interesting. I just shared an article with Shauna that came out of a national publication today that was speaking to that very issue that you raised about, you know, districts that are making these accommodations to try to help relieve the stress of staff and yet not giving consideration to what burden that puts on parents. When you do that, like if you, there were some districts that have just said every Wednesday, we're gonna do an early out. In addition to whatever PD we've got going on, well, that puts a huge childcare burden on on parents.
As someone who worked outside the district when I was raising my children, I do get that. I just, you know, it does. It can be inconvenient. I do know in Marshalltown, a lot of our churches did pick that up and started taking students on early outs for Wednesdays. So I think there's ways to work within the community. This will work for me, I guess, if it works for the teachers, but I really think we need to be looking at that PLC. How can we meet the need for teachers to plan as a team, to coordinate as a team, and still give them time during the day to do the things they need to do? Because they can't really continue to work the hours we've been asking them to work the last couple of years if we're gonna keep teach staff, teaching staff. They're going to leave. They're going to find other professions. We're having trouble recruiting.
Yeah, but you gotta come up here and use a microphone, Sean.
So Jan, I'm not sure that you're suggesting that we would have any changes within the calendar. I think you're specifically targeting whether or not the frequency of our PLCs are in an appropriate spot.
Well, I think they need to happen frequently, but if they have to have to more times than eight times a year.
Right.
So, right.
Yes.
Yeah. So, but even if we did some of them on these days, that would help, I think, relieve some of the burden that we're running into.
And I can, I can, there's a couple of things I want to share with you that I'm not sure you're aware of. One would be I surveyed all of our pre-K through six teachers in relation to the frequency of PLCs, and I can share that data with you. And then I can share all the communication that I shared with the teachers following that and the changes that we made for PLCs at those levels. That, that's specific to pre-K through six, because we were really looking at the differences between how often we were meeting in both literacy and math and the time that it was taking from their day in relation to the staff shortages. We've also had during those professional learning days, now it's not hours and hours, like you're asking for a half-day of that PD day. But we've had principals set aside, here's forty-five minutes for you to meet your PLC, and that negates your need to meet for the next six-day cycle. So some of what you're suggesting is happening, it's just not to the extent of here's four hours to meet with PLCs, and you don't need to do that.
Oh, wouldn't necessarily need to be, no, I didn't mean four hours of PLC. I just meant that the PLC would meet on those days as opposed to always being done in school day. No, I wasn't expecting a four-hour PLC.
Yeah, because if a professional learning community is operating at a high level, that is learning, right?
Right. Oh, I, yes, I agree.
Okay, did that help?
It did, and I think we both cleared up misunderstandings, because I never intended on a four-hour PLC.
Perfect. Awesome. Thanks.
Well, and the other thing to keep in mind, that anything that we add to, you know, teacher time, whether it be in the form of professional development, planning time, you know, not having school and live planning time or whatever comes at the expense of student contact time. And one of the things that we're really trying to focus on is learning acceleration, addressing learning loss, trying to get all kids to where they need and can achieve at. You know, it's gonna be an ongoing process for the next couple of years, for sure.
I, I just have a statement and a question, just studying the calendars. My biggest concern, the second one, is is the lack of spring break. And and not only that, you got a bigger Thanksgiving and Christmas fall close together. But the question I have is, is, so we're given the parents and the staff the option to state their opinion. Where do we go from there?
Based on those opinions and based on our discussions at the district level, we'd bring a recommendation forward to you, or we'd let you choose possibly. I always come forward with a recommendation and rationale for that. So, again, the agreement when, two years ago, was that we're gonna do alternating years with full-week spring break in March, which I neglected to mention, but this spring break and option one does match up with both the Regents and MCC, which is not always the case. And historically, we tended to lean towards matching up with MCC because of the significant amount of dual enrollment work that we do with them both on our campus and and on theirs. But this year and next year does align with them. And part of the reason, you know, without the fall break, the reason we went to the Easter, shortened the Easter break was to address what Sarah was talking about, to try to finish a little earlier than we had been, because we were with snow days and everything. We're stretching in the second and nearly the third week of June, which has a lot of rippling effects, as Karina could tell you, with summer school programming and youth activities in the summer and other youth programs, whether it be college for kids and what have. So we try to do our best to finish as as early as we can. You know, part of the concern, too, used to be relative air conditioning, which is now less of a concern, obviously.
Are there options? I mean, I would assume that there should be options to not have to have snow days anymore, because we could do some sort of online learning.
Unfortunately, there are not, because that was a temporary provision early on in the Return to Learn, which the legislature ended, and then they took up a bill last year to consider, there was a bill to allow for up to five snow days to be repurposed into virtual learning days. And they did not pass that, so we cannot count virtual-only learning as school days, unfortunately. It seems counter to everything that we've done. But I think part of it is due to attitudes that are perceptions that were developed about virtual learning because of the struggles that students and parents and schools had to do it as effectively as people wanted it done. There was kind of a, you know, everybody kind of, there was a national cry about it not being affected, essentially, and I think that tempered some of our legislative feelings on it, too.
That's unfortunate.
Is there still a possibility of making up those days during some, some of the holidays? Because I know like Martin Luther King was one of those snow makeup days in the past. Is that still? Can do or not?
Well, from an equity standpoint, we try to keep that sacred. I think it's actually a holiday for most everybody now. So we really wouldn't make up on that day, the the day that's a possibility. It tends to generally be a professional development day. It's President's Day, you know, the students have it off, but staff don't. That would be, you know, a day of latitude. Although, you know, government workers generally have that day off, so they kind of appreciate, some of them appreciate having their kids at that time.
But we don't have any built-ins nowadays in this calendar.
We haven't built snow days into the calendar for
Number of years.
A number of years.
You know, it's with breaks, it's kind of tough, because how do you make plans when you don't know whether school's gonna be in session or not as apparent, or you just make your plans and not worry about it, and then classrooms are half-full or whatever, so. And depending on, you know, the last few years, because we do have way more than the thousand eighty minimum required student hours, you know, there's, there's been some, well, last year, for example, with the Dray Show, you know, I forgave a week worth of school for students. You know, there's, there's been some, well, last year, for example, with the Dray show, you know, I forgave a week worth of school for students. Then we figured out a reasonable way for the staff to make up that contract time over the duration of time. You know, heading towards the end of the year and there's been other years where we forgave a day or two, you know, in lieu of making them up too. Um, so. The thing that's hard anytime we forgive those days is we still have teacher contract days that need to be filled and generally the very end of the school year, you know, you can find a substantive way to meaningfully engage staff for a day or two, but beyond that, it's kind of tough. Right at the end of the school year.
Any other questions or comments about these two calendar options?
Let's hope we don't have snow days.
Yeah, and these will come back, or at least one of these will come back as a recommendation in January.
And the public hearing, I noticed on there, it says January eighteenth of twenty twenty-one. That needs to be.
Do we need, what's that?
We'll have to do the public hearing on January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two.
All travel back in time together. The public here.
Okay. Uh, the next topic is the Marshall County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. That's a mouthful. Um, every five years, the county has to revise and resubmit to the state and federal government their hazard mitigation plan. Uh, the one that the most recent one we've been operating on, which was approved right as around the time I came to the district, expired on October fifteenth, uh, the county had been facilitating work, much of which we were engaged with um, different people, including myself from the district since last spring, but unfortunately it wasn't completed by October fifteenth. So I did get completed just prior to Thanksgiving, submitted to the state. Uh, the state approved it about a week ago or so, and they forwarded it on to FEMA, the federal government for approval, which from what I've been told usually takes thirty days or less. So I'm guessing sometime in January, we'll we'll hear about that. But as part of the process, each of the school districts in Marshall County that participated are asked to pass a resolution of support for it. And our involvement in this and the resolution of support, uh, which has board president's signature after approval and, um, our submit, tho- those things are necessary for us to be eligible for any grants that we apply for, for federal assistance. As I've shared with you before, we spent about a year working on, um, a grant application to FEMA with the state for a tornado safe team room complex at, uh, the Marshall High School Athletic Stadium, which I, I really feel strongly that we've got a great application there. That application has sat with the state because of this plan not being approved. Had they forwarded it, it would have got sent back or rejected because you have to have a a current plan, um, that's been approved on file. So as soon as, uh, the federal government gives their seal approval for this, then our application will go forward. And hopefully within a month or so, we'll find out about that. So I don't know if we want to read the resolution.
I thought you were going to say to want to read the hazard mitigation.
It's only there in seventy-seven pages. Yeah, I know.
I don't know, do we need to read the?
If people are comfortable.
Resolution.
It's essentially saying we're supporting the efforts of the county and this plan and will be an active participant.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the Marshall County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan resolution?
So moved.
We'll go Wal McGinnis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say no. Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, um, so we have the OSHA mandatory policy regulations and exhibits before you, once again, you'll remember that these came before you in November and the board had chosen to table at that time to wait and see what was going to happen through the courts and actually a stay had been put into effect right before, um, we brought those forward. Well, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals has recently, as of Friday, um, lifted that stay, which puts this back into effect. Um, we did adjust the dates on these policies because we thought we'd need to, but actually we've been advised as of like three o'clock this afternoon to leave the original dates, which were the November, December dates, uh, because, um, basically um, they're allowing for, um, an extension without putting it in the policy of I think it's January tenth and February ninth. So January tenth is what used to be December sixth, when we need to be in a position of having proof of vaccination, complete vaccination status for our employees. Um, actually the day before, because the day, that day is when if, if you're unvaccinated, you would need to start wearing masks at work while you're at work. And then also the testing programs need to be in place by that time. Uh, or by the time of February, um, the February date as well. So, uh, what we're seeking is board approval for what is currently enforced in law now. If something changes before we have to implement, you know, obviously we're already down the road of collecting proof of vaccination. Um, hopefully all of our people that are in that position will take advantage of the incentive that we've had out. We've had about seventy percent turn there as of earlier today. And then, uh, we're in the process of trying to figure out what our options are internally and externally in terms of providing both the funding as well as the assistance to have the testing happen onsite, you know, through an onsite clinic, uh, working with some of our corporate partners that already have this going on or or working on, um, partnering with agencies that do this, uh, for a business and that sort of thing. But I'm really thankful that the board gave us the opportunity, though we didn't put these into place and remember to start moving forward on that proof of vaccination. Cause that's going to help us not have to scramble. Um, and then, you know, we already were behind the scenes kind of having conversations on what our options were, um, in terms of doing the testing. We want to make it as convenient as we can for the employees that will need to do that, that choose to do that. And we want to make it affordable and that the district would use S R funds to pay for, uh, at least for this year, assuming that um, we'll be needing to do it, uh, through the end of the year, but we don't know if that's going to be the case or not. But if for some reason like the Supreme Court changes the direction of this, we'll just go ahead and freeze it at that time. We don't need, we don't have to continue to implement it. Um, or we could bring it to the board to decide whether to continue the testing. I mean, there's some entities like JBS that's been doing this for, you know, three months doing random testing, I think of their employees, but, um, we probably wouldn't want to go to the expense if we weren't required to do so, I'm guessing. But as of right now, we need to be in a position so we wouldn't, uh, be fined if we found not in compliance to have the proof of vaccination nailed down by early January, and then we would need to be in a position of starting to administer those weekly tests um, to determine someone's ability to be at work or not, uh, by early February.
So if a staff member chooses not to get the vaccine, they get the option of just testing weekly, or is that, is it a matter?
Yeah, so there's two directions you can go. You can require vaccinations and if people choose not to get vaccinated, then they can't work. Or you can choose this option was choose to make provisions for those that are unvaccinated as well as those that are vaccinated. So we're choosing this, um, option as the path of least resistance. Hoping it accommodates people to the point where, you know, they don't wish to leave our employment as a result of it. Which would probably be leaving the profession because all schools that have a hundred or more employees are having to implement this.
But this is, this is an option they can take. It's not something that needs to be approved by you or the board or anything. Like they can just say, I don't want to take the vaccine. I'm going to take this option.
Correct.
So do we already have in place everything that we need to meet the now January tenth date?
Yes.
Okay, so.
We don't have all the information collected yet. We have.
We gave them until which date to receive the?
They have till tomorrow at, uh, four thirty for the incentive.
Okay.
But they would have, you know, um, they would have till basically this January date to get it in. For some reason, they didn't turn it in by then.
So are we operating under the assumption that if you, they haven't reported that they have been vaccinated, that they are unvaccinated?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not requiring them to report that they are unvaccinated.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so every, all of that will be in place by well in advance or should be in place well in advance of this January tenth because we have a, an option to just assume that they're unvaccinated if they, if the employee chooses to not report.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and so right now, if they do not report that they're vaccinated, then they're, or when this takes effect, that they'll have to have this weekly test. And we're looking at paying for that test out of these S R funds. So it does not cost the district anything. It's still costing the taxpayer, but not the district, correct?
Well, it's coming out of our district S R funds, so the federal government funds that, that are for COVID related purposes.
So have we discussed the option of people who simply choose not to be vaccinated, even though they have no health concerns or religious concerns on it? I guess I'm struggling with why we have to pay for their testing. This seems like it's an optional thing.
We don't have to. We could put it in the, on the employee, but our position has been wanting to accommodate our employees so that we keep our employees.
That makes sense.
I will, uh, we, we should not do that at all. We should give our employees options.
Right.
And, you know, I, I drove here today and, and speed limit was twenty-five. That's the law. I want to do thirty-five, but I did twenty-five. And this is the law, whether you like it or not, to date, this is the law, right? And we got to abide by it. And the consequences are extreme. Thirteen thousand per employee, right? And so I feel we need to give options and accommodate these individuals so they can do what they do best, which teach our kids.
That sounds reasonable. It's frustrating, but reasonable.
The other thing to note is that just in the last week, the federal government has decided to require group health plans effective January first of twenty twenty-two to cover the cost of testing for those in those plans at no cost share. So we're going to end up paying for it one way or another.
Pay for it one way or the other.
Yep. And fully vaccinated means two doses of Moderna or Pfizer or one dose of the Johnson, Johnson and Johnson product. Is that correct? The booster is not
Correct.
Included in, okay, that was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure.
We, we are in the process of working with Hy-Vee to offer a booster clinic for any of our employees as well as any of our secondary students that would wish to take advantage of that. I think we're looking at maybe Saturday, uh, January fifteenth or something like that.
And, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I mean, we, we've consistently tried to help provide access or ease of access to that for our students and our employees. And I've had pretty good response to that, so.
If this gets taken upon the Supreme Court and they, they feel this is unconstitutional, are we going to put, automatically put a freeze of this right away?
Yeah, that's what I shared.
Okay.
At least we would bring it before the board to make a decision on that.
And just because I was asked, this will not, um, create a problem for somebody who wants to apply for a position if they're not vaccinated, right? They would still be given those options of testing.
Um, I don't know if we've had that discussion, but yeah, I would assume so. I don't think we're going to mandate
Okay.
That they have to be vaccinated.
So what are the consequences, I guess, if we, there, you know, Zach mentioned, there are a lot of there's still a lot of litigation going on here. And we have until January tenth before the first actual, like, um, date kicks in, I guess. What are, what are the consequences if we would wait to approve the policy until some of the legal stuff kind of settles down?
Right. Well, number one, there, there's going to be a mad rush for accessing testing, which isn't easily or readily available. Um, which is why we've been trying to work on, um, having, being closer to having a way to make that happen uh, for our staff. So again, it's, I mean, these policies are only in effect for the duration of time that this is law. So we can make them, you, you can make a motion that if the Supreme Court, uh, reverses it, then upon that, these no longer have effect. But we need to keep the wheels moving so that we're making a good faith effort to be in position to comply with the law, which is currently in place right now.
And we don't meet again until January eighteenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if they bet on this. But I think most people would have bet that because of the political leanings on this issue, that there was a better chance for it to be upheld than to have been lifted based on a predominance of the judges being Republican and and it was lifted. And so the Supreme Court's in the same position. So nothing's a hundred percent guarantee, but if I were to lean one way or another, I would think they would uphold it today. Surprises and reversal, but I, I'd much rather be proactive than reactive. I mean, I think as evidenced by the fact that we don't have people here, which I think many of the people that came the last time were for some reason thinking that we were requiring vaccinations or forcing vaccinations. I mean, that was the sense that I got from them when, no, it's a, it's an option um, to be vaccinated or not, that's the route that we're taking. But we're just saying this law continues to stand to effect. This is what we have to do to comply with that choice to allow unvaccinated people to work in our schools.
Sean, do you have comments from a professional background on this?
Um, well, I, I think it would be bad advice to tell a client not to comply with the OSHA regulations. How's that? I'll leave it there. Uh, other questions, comments? If not, we need a motion to adopt uh, policies four oh three point seven, four oh three seven R one, four oh three seven R two, four oh three seven E one, four oh three seven E two, four oh three seven E three, and two oh nine point four and waive additional readings.
If we do an emergency, we still bring it back for a second.
We'll adopt them on an emergency basis and bring it back for a second reading.
Yeah, I think that was the advice we got from A.
We'll do that then.
So moved. That we're going to do this as a emergency thing and bring it back for a second reading, correct?
That sounds like the motion you're making, Jan.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. For a second?
Second.
McGinnis, Hernandez, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed can say no. Motion carries six to zero.
So I have a question. Do we need to make a second? I mean, if we want this to not move forward, if the law changes between now and the next time we meet, do we need to make a second motion to make this only like that we don't have to meet again? Like that we don't have to meet again to not have this go into effect? Or is the policy already state that if the law is not in effect, this policy is not in effect?
I think the policy is in effect. Doctor Shudy indicated it's not his intention to enforce the policy in the event the Supreme Court says. That you that the OSHA action has stayed. If somebody wants to make a motion specific to that, I think they can certainly do so.
So now I have to figure out how to phrase that. I'd like to motion that if the law is not in effect, the policy is not in effect.
Second.
Can you add that if it does come in effect? And then gets, what is it called? It's like appealed or something, or we can freeze it. We can overturn the policy or something. So we're trying to move that this policy will only be in effect if it's the law.
But if it's the law.
Yes, and if it's not the law, it is not in effect, or it will not be enforced.
Even though we just passed a policy that says there's a suspension of policy, it's a suspension of policy, policy. That we just passed unanimously, that we can overturn a board policy if we want to.
We don't need.
So.
Right, but that would require us to vote.
We would have to vote, so we would have to call a special meeting if it came up before the January tenth, because we don't meet again until the eighth.
But since we've only actually done the first reading on this one, we still have to do the second.
But that comes January eighteenth, because that's our next meeting. So it's after the law would supposedly go on. I mean, there's so many. Questions. I get what you're saying, though, that like if it changes on January fifth. And then Leah's saying that if we say that we want to suspend the policy, if the law changes. Then January fifth, it would be done without us having to meet. That's what I'm. You want it to be.
Right, that's my understanding.
Did I motion correctly? We still have to vote either way because it was second.
You'll have to vote either way. There's a motion and a second on the floor. My understanding of the motion. Is that in the event that the OSHA, right, the E T, the OSHA E T S regulations. If enforcement is stayed by court order. Then the policies that we have adopted would be suspended. Do I understand the motion correctly?
Yes.
Or no longer in effect. Sure you'd wanna say there Nolan Boyd.
Is stayed by court order.
Because ultimately the OSHA regs could come back.
It could come flip again.
Right. Is that your motion, Leo?
Yes, can you repeat the last part of that? In the event that the OSHA E T S enforcement is stayed by court order.
Further court order that enforcement of policies four oh three seven, whatever. Will be suspended.
Automatically suspended.
Yep.
And Stanley made the motion and who was the second?
Well, Zach did.
All right, I'm caught up.
We need to vote on it?
Yeah, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. The motion carries six to zero.
Sorry, that was so complicated.
Okay. Paul out?
All right.
Financial report.
So each month, under the financial reports, you will see. Um, at least two and potentially by the end of the year, five monthly documents. I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of each of those documents. If you can open up the depository first. So the depository report provides a summary of where the district's money is at. Um, this is a reconciled cash balance as of the last day of the month, each month. So what you're seeing here is the reconciled cash balances as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. This is a report that's legally required to be presented to the board. Um, annually at the annual meeting, only one time per year, but this is a report that I do every month because I just find it a good summary report. Um, so I do go ahead and share it with you each month. So yeah, just simply our cash balances. You can go to the fund financial summary, please. So this report is a very high level summary for each of our funds. Um, our fiscal year is Jan is July first through June thirtieth. Um, and during the year, the district basically operates on a cash basis for each of these funds. So this report will always begin with the beginning of the year fund balances, July one, if you see down. The left-hand side there. Um, followed by the year-to-date revenues, the year-to-date expenditures, and then the current month ending fund balance for each fund. Respectively, so for instance, in this report. You're looking at the November thirtieth ending fund balances. And all of these right now are currently unaudited fund balances. We are required to report at year end on a modified accrual basis for the governmental funds. And full accrual for our proprietary and fiduciary funds. Um, so during July and August each year. Uh, following the June thirtieth year end, we convert everything to the required accrual reporting basis. And this is done prior to submitting our certified annual report to the Department of Ed, which is due on September fifteenth of each year. So during the year, when you see this report, it's going to be on a cash basis. When you start to see this report on June thirtieth, um, which you will see in July and August and September. For June thirtieth, um, that will be on an accrual basis. Um, this, we have this set up so that the funds that receive property tax revenues are the first five. Funds on the right or on the left there, the general fund, management fund, Papple, Pearl, and Debt Service. All receive property tax revenues. The funds on the right-hand side, um, do not receive any property tax revenues. The majority of our property taxes are received in October and April of each year. And the general fund receives state aid in ten equal payments that start in September and end in June of each year. Below that, you're going to see the current month activity for each of those funds also. Does anybody have any questions on on this report before we dig a little, dig a little deeper? Into the general fund? Okay. Amy, can you go to the general fund?
Yep, thank you.
So the general fund I like to um, look at in a lot more detail because it is our main operating fund. And um, this is the only fund that the spending authority concept applies to. So when we talk about the general fund, we have over six thousand chart of account numbers in the general fund alone. And the monthly report um, for revenues and expenditures is over eighty pages long, so. It it helps me and um, therefore is presented to you. A summary report which in which we attempt to condense. All of this into a single page for the revenues and a single page for the expenditures. Um, and try to make this a more understandable uh, format for those that don't work with six thousand. Account numbers on a daily basis. Um, so if you look at the general fund revenue summary, we report this out by source. And we identify the local sources, state sources, and the federal sources. Um, this report is also going to pull in the budget numbers for the current year and and the two previous years. I use this report to look for reasonableness. From month to month in different areas. For example, if we look at the first line for property taxes. Um, we receive the majority of our property tax payments in October and April. Of each year, basically, I mean, we get some every month, but the two biggest payments are October and April, so. You know, if you look at that and you say we have received nine point two million out of about eighteen point two million, that's fifty percent. That is exactly right where I would expect it to be at this point in the year when we've really only received the big October payment. Um, other things as we go down the left-hand side there, tuition payments, you'll notice that those are all zeros right now. That is because we do not bill for tuition or receive tuition. Um, or pay tuition until after the first semester and until after the second semester. So in essence, we haven't done any of that yet for this year. You can see that the state and local sources um, are budgeted to be about twenty nineteen point two million for this budget year. The second section is the state sources. This is all of our state aid. Um, most of this after the foundation aid or all of those things after the foundation aid are really categorical funds. Um, that can only be spent on those specific uh, programs, but we receive um, state aid. In ten equal installments, starting in September and finishing in June, so you can see there that we've received. Um, thirty percent of most of those, and that's exactly what what we would expect to see. And the last section or the state sources um, were budgeted to receive about forty three million this year. The last section is the federal sources. This one's a little bit harder to um. Budget for, I guess, because what well, what we have to do, we have to budget that we are going to spend one hundred percent. Of what we have available for federal sources, but we don't always really intend to spend all of that. Um, so that gets a little tricky, but for the for our federal title programs and such, we have four quarters. That we um, file claims for. So again, there a lot of those title funds, we have not received any revenue yet. Because we just filed our first claim in the month of November for those that first quarter. Um, federal revenue the last couple of years has been um, a little bit, well, a lot higher than. Uh, prior to COVID because we have infusion of S R funds um, that we have available. Um, what I should know on the S R funds is, you know, we have about fifteen million. Um, of S R funds that are available, but the S R funds are all on a reimbursement basis only. So until we spend the money, we do not receive the money. We have to file quarterly quarterly claims for those also. And that, you know, the S R part is probably the most challenging part of the budget for this. This year. For the line item budget. So I use this report um, to look and see if there's significant variances anywhere and we. If there are, we investigate, you know, whether something has not been coded properly, whether we didn't receive revenue that we. Um, perhaps should have. Or there are just other unforeseen circumstances and that we will not meet the budget, and there's been a lot of those in the last couple of years. Just due to not being able to offer programs um, that we we thought we were going to. Um, you can pull up the expenditure summary. The expenditure side of things for the general fund, we report by object code. Uh, this is um, to hopefully more closely mirror traditional financials that you might see in the private sector. That show salaries, benefits, postage, fuel, things like that. Typically for school districts, salaries and benefits are about seventy five to eighty percent of a general fund budget. And so we I break this this report down into two sections. Um, the first top half is compensation, salaries and benefits are personnel costs. And our personnel budget is about seventy five percent of our overall budget for this year. And then the bottom section is the non-personnel costs. Um, in on the expenditure side for the line item budget. Um, we aren't as concerned with, you know, going over budget in any single line item. But we want the departments and the people that are overseeing programs to stay within their line item budgets. For that program or for that department. We don't, we don't like micromanage the line items is what I'm trying to say. We are budgeted to expend about sixty four point three million for this year. Although I do think that's subject to change, um, depending on some S R expenditures. That we have potentially. Um, it's also important to remember that, you know, not all the revenue that we receive comes with authority. So if you look at the the general fund summary and say, okay, we have general fund revenue. We expect to bring in of about sixty nine million. We have expenditures of about sixty four million. But we have, um, when we did the aid and levy for last year. Um, in order to improve our solvency ratio, we asked for cash. Um, that is coming in to our budget that does not bring authority with it. So it's really important that we have a good grasp on what our authority is doing. Because nowhere in any of these financial statements do you see anything about spending authority. Spending authority is a completely different concept um, than the actual financial statements, so. It's always important to remember that just because we have revenue coming in doesn't mean that it's all able to be. Budgeted to be spent. And the final one, the final report is the expenses to publish budget comparison. Um, this is reflective as of November thirtieth of twenty twenty one. This is a report that I don't find incredibly useful until later in the year, because typically you're not going to overspend your budget. Um, in the first one or two months of the year, hopefully, anyway. Um, this report is, um, we're legally responsible for not overspending our certified expenditures. So when we do our certified budget every year, we say that we will not overspend in these four functional areas. And it doesn't look at it by fund, although I break it out by fund, it actually looks at it by. Instruction, support services, non-instruction, and then the debt and other. And so as long as we don't overspend in any one of those functional areas, we're okay. If we do intend to overspend in any one of those functional areas. Um, legally, we are required to amend our budget before we overspend. Um, so, you know, you can see right now in as of November, we have only spent about twenty two percent. Of the instructional function. Of our overall budget. As always, you know, if there's something else that you guys would like to see, um, I'm certainly more than happy to discuss that. I'm certainly more than happy to discuss that and see what we can do to provide that information. This is the information that I would do, these are the reports that I would do regardless of whether I showed them to you or not because they are very helpful to me to have this kind of summary overview. But if, if you would like to look at anything else, we can certainly look into that.
I just have one question. I, I kind of understand the seventy-three percent on facilities because I know we've done a lot of work with our facilities. So why are we at fifty-one percent on debt?
Because our debt is typically paid twice a year.
Oh, okay. So we've paid half of it. Okay.
Any other questions?
Looks like you're in the clear. Please to the next topic.
Thank you. It's a lot of information.
It is.
It's a lot to absorb.
It's good to look at it from those different perspectives. So thanks.
And the next item is the request to the SBRC for our dropout prevention modified supplemental amount. And this goes back to what Shauna and Eric were talking a little bit about, the dropout prevention at-risk programming. So this program is funded primarily through property tax. And we have to do this so early in the year because it has to be factored into our aid levy, which we will be getting in the next six weeks or so. So that's why we have to do this early. We do this ahead of even doing our certified budget. So kind of a little bit backwards, if you ask me, but anyway, it is all driven by formula. And due to COVID and some other unforeseen things that prevented us from providing some programming that we had previously budgeted for, we ended up carrying over about four hundred thousand dollars in this categorical funding stream. And so the formula actually requires us to factor in that carryover from fiscal twenty-one into the fiscal twenty-three budget, which you might ask yourself, that could be a problem. Yeah, and yes, it could be a problem. Anyway, so for fiscal twenty-three, we are limited by that carryover. And the maximum amount that we can request for MSA is one million, five hundred and three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. And so that is what I am asking for permission to submit the application for. This is actually less than the amount that we asked for last year, one point six million. But again, it's because of the, the formula limitations and we do need this entire amount to continue the programming in, in effect.
Any questions for Paul out?
So do you need a motion?
Yep, we need a motion to authorize the submission of the request for modified supplemental amount for dropout prevention, the amount of one million, five hundred, three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
So moved. Second.
Stanley Falters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Motion carries six to zero. Lynn, you're back. But you never left.
Um, today I'm asking for the board's approval to increase adult meal prices by a dime. This would put us with the USDA required minimum meal price for adults. This is a unusual timing for this request, but with the way that food service is operating right now, there is delayed guidance from the USDA on the minimum meal price requirement. So schools need to have this in place by January one, which is what's coming to you now.
Is, is this for, for parents or is this for teachers? Who's this for?
Yeah, so it'd be any adult or like non-reimbursable price meal that we sell. So it would be for staff members, teachers, if a parent wanted to come and eat with their child. Any, anything like that would qualify.
So other schools are the same price?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, all across the nation, it's the minimum required price by the USDA. And you can see that the way we arrive at the three dollars and ninety-five cents is by taking the reimbursable amount that we receive for a student meal and then adding the seven cent certification that we receive for our menu compliance with the commodity value per meal that we receive, and that all adds up to three ninety-five.
Sounds like a cheap meal. I, I show up the school.
You should. Yeah, I think we've got good food.
So just to be clear, all schools have to meet this minimum, but some may charge more.
Correct. Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve increasing the adult meal price to three dollars and ninety-five cents effective January first, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis Falters, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post say no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
So we have one policy under first reading. This is a policy Sean reviewed for the last meeting, four oh five point two licensed employee qualifications, recruitment and selection. There were no further changes made to this policy, so I would recommend the board approve and waive the second reading.
I have a motion to approve four oh five point two and waive the second reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Falters Hernandez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion carries six to zero. And I think, Karina, did you have?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for four oh five point ten, per building director, Todd, access to buildings. Added a couple of sentences regarding the guest badges at every building, so. First reading to end.
So that one will have to come back. Are there any questions about that one? Okay.
And then four oh five point eleven, teacher functions, no changes. So Mark.
Mark, that one is reviewed. Questions about that one at all? Market is reviewed.
And then four oh five point twelve, Nurse Stacy recommends changing the order of nurses' reports. So mark that as first reading to end.
So that one will come back as well. Are there questions about that one for Karina? Okay. Adam. I would just, before you say anything, Adam, I would point out that with the lengthy agenda, we made it here nine minutes over. I think we're doing pretty good.
I was just about to say, we're not at three hours yet, which is incredible.
Wow. Where do we go from here is somewhat dependent on you.
Yeah, well. I'll do my best. So I, I wanted to share with you guys that I, as well as Amy Harmsen and Dave Stanfield are planning on a fun, actually, I think we're still looking at doing it in here. We're, we're going to incorporate a few of our elementary students in sharing updates with parents and the community, basically sharing much of the information that's in the weekly Bobcat newsletter. And we're, we're, so we're really excited about that. We're still, we, I think we have a general idea of how that program's going to play out. And then someday, I, I think we're hoping to expand that, but we've got a, we're, we're starting small and trying to, trying to find a system that works for, for that. So, yeah, that'll be, those will be, I think, a lot of fun to be involved with because we'll be, they'll be scripted and, you know, it'll be a great chance for students to literally tell a lot of the good stories coming out of the district. So. So, yeah, otherwise just pushing forward on the many, 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 many projects.
Questions for Adam? Okay, thank you. Looking at reminders, our next meeting is January eighteenth. Jan, you're up for policy reviews. We've got a few committee meetings coming up. The insurance benefits committees meeting in January. Looks like teacher qualities meeting in January and then some other meetings out into February. Committee reports. Zach, anything from finance that we didn't hit this evening?
We covered everything.
Do you want to talk about Acer thing or do you want me to?
Yeah, we, well, we've moved Acer to January. We had a lot of people that couldn't make this Monday work. I think the county had a special meeting and some other conflicts and there is some confusion, whether it was virtual in person. But as it turned out, Sean and I would have been two of five people probably that would have been in attendance. So we've moved it to a January date and thus far it appears it's going to work for more people. So.
So what have we done this evening to improve education for the students in Marshalltown?
We've approved the at-risk funding, which is something a lot of our students use. Like listening about the opportunity to, the Marsh Town Virtual Academy. A nice option for open enrolled kids and just in general, our families who need that.
I agree. I like that we are offering many different options to try to meet students where they are and then continue to grow them from an educational standpoint from there.
Nice to see the early graduates.
Well, the paras will be receiving
Yeah.
a modern day unprecedented increase probably. And, you know, in terms of value added, you know, there's a carrot out there for seeking, you know, people that have furthered their education in those positions, starting next fall as well.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause? Okay, we're going to take five minutes for a break. And then when we come back, we'll go into closed session.